Ms. Manser?
Here.
Ms. Wolsey?
Here.
Ms. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Oats?
Here.
Mr. Fiero? Mr. Evans? Mrs. Morris? Dr. Heintzke? Ms. Robinson?
Here. Is there any objection to excusing the absence of our colleagues Asia Morris this evening? Seeing no objection, the absence of Asia Morris is approved. Is there any objections for the approval of the agenda? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. Now that brings us to our board monthly workshop. The chair recognizes Dr. Bedell to present the policy monitoring workshop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, we will have Jerome, be ready to go with the show here. We will provide the board with an update on Board Policy Monitoring 1.2. And this is on our college and career readiness, progress that the district's making, and ultimately changes.
Dr. Bedell, this is someone we haven't seen before. Can you kind of introduce him and tell us a little bit about him?
Yes, ma'am. Jerome Williams works in our Research and Accountability Division. And he is the second-in-command behind Michael Reynolds. So he serves as a director within the department, if I'm not mistaking. And then you can actually tell folks how long you've been with the system and what your role is before you present.
Okay. Yeah, so again, thanks for the introduction. Jerome Williams, working Accountability, Research and Assessment. I've been with the school district for about three years now. And I can say unequivocally that I'm super excited about the direction that we're headed. And the team that we've got in place, I feel like we're in really great shape, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. So what we're gonna, what I'm gonna go over today is MSEP 5 Annual Performance Review, or APR. And this ties into Board Policy 1.2, and then Pillar A, which is Personalized Rigorous Culture Responsive Teaching and Learning. So here's just a review of Board Policy 1.2. It's pretty clear there, all scholars will graduate college and career-ready. All scholars will receive a curriculum that positions them to excel in the 21st century and beyond. And earlier I mentioned Pillar A, Personalized Rigorous Culture Responsive Teaching and Learning. This is, CCR is totally in line with our strategic priorities within Pillar A, and with aligning institutional systems and personalization and successful transitions for students. So some of the things that we've got here, KCPS is removing barriers to provide students with opportunities to take advanced placement. With that being said, there's gonna be a new pathway with human geography that'll be starting. So that'll be an extra opportunity for students, introductory pathway courses, and increasing our ACT scores. We also plan on highlighting our advanced scholars, and we're offering Project Lead the Way, K-5. As you know, Project Lead the Way is a dynamic, hands-on learning platform that allows kids to be creative and critically think about the problems that they're trying to solve. So what we're looking at here, this is Appendix C, the MSEP 5 Technical Guide. And it's basically the assessment scoring matrix for the assessments that feed into College and Career Readiness, or CCR 1.3. And so across the top, the columns, you've got your student weight, your ACT, SAT, which we don't administer, COMPASS, which is a placement exam, ASVAB, the Military Aptitude Test, and the ACT Work Keys, which is a job skills assessment, where kids can have the opportunity to earn a National Career Readiness Certificate. Going down the rows, you can see that no participation equals a zero. So obviously, we want to get our kids to take an assessment. The more the merrier, actually, because you can be, provides multiple measures of assessment and things like that. And there's different weights attached to each test. And all this feeds into CCR 1.3, and the percent of kids, students who are scoring at or above the state average. There's some key dates on the side here. So the preliminary results will be released about September 24-ish. And at that time, we'll have some time to look at our data, certify it, make sure that everything is accurate, and go from there. It'll be a December 3 APR preview. CCR data's frozen on the 7th, and the final APR should come out in April or December 17th of this year. Appendix D is looking specifically at those other assessments. You've got your AP, which stands for Advanced Placement, your IB, International Baccalaureate, Project Lead the Way, PLTY, and then IRC, which again is an industry-recognized certificate, or credential, and then your dual credit and dual enrollment. And again, student weight, zero for no record of participation. Or some of these are tied to grades, like your AP and your IB. And then if you earn a B in your AP course, you get a weight of one. 1.25 for a score greater than three. And just, I guess to make this a little bit easier to understand, if you've got a kid who takes a, let me back up here. You've got a kid who takes an ACT and he scores a 17, he's getting a .25. That same kid takes a COMPASS and scores greater than a 66, he's gonna get a one. And so the way that it works, they take the higher score that the kid obtains. So again, that, it benefits the students to have multiple measures and multiple assessments, because they may do better on an ASVAB than they might on an SAT if that's what they were taking. Now we move on to CCR 356. This is the post-secondary placement. We've got three years of data there. We're able to show this right now, because this data is static. This is where we're at. There's no recertification on this. This is where we're at. So we're at 88.8 for a percent of students earning a qualifying score. A qualifying score is made up of students who are attending a two-year college, a four-year college. They're employed. It doesn't have to be related to whatever program they ran. If it was CTE, they just have to be employed. The military or NOC stands for Non-Credit College, which would be your Conchords and your Pinnacles. And so we're gonna earn ten full points. And this particular metric, again, has been certified. And you can see the ranges there for our high schools. Okay, so next steps for college and career readiness. I talked a little bit about the data quality control. When we get the preliminary results, what we're gonna need to do is make sure that we're getting credit for everything that our students have earned. So we'll check to see with what Moses is telling us. Make sure that we're getting credit if a kid's got an IRC. That needs to be reflected in our APR. So we will do that. We will also provide Saturday Institute each quarter for students, and required assessment for all students, mentor teachers from other districts. That basically means bringing in teachers who have had successful AP programs in other districts, and helping our teachers to identify best practices and ways that we can improve our scores. You know, AP in particular, we had about 170 kids take the AP exam, and I'd say about 10 scored greater than a three. So we've got some work to do there. But I feel like we're positioning ourselves, again, by aligning our instructional and institutional practices to help kids reach their goals. We've got IB Saturday Institute, revise student schedules for larger blocks of time. The one right underneath that, lunch and limo rides for AP and IB scholars. I think that's very important. So the idea is to pick up the kids who have scored three or higher, take them out to lunch, and hopefully that visualization will encourage other students to take AP courses, and then more importantly, take the AP exam. IRC, again, increase enrollment, require all students to complete it. A TSA is something, it's called a Technical Skills Assessment. The TSA is required for all Perkins Concentrators, and IRC is not required. So you don't have to be a CTE student to do an IRC. But there are some TSAs that are applicable to an IRC. So we just want to make sure we're giving kids more opportunities to earn one of those credentials. And ACT, continue to provide pre-ACT grades nine through 11. And we've got our junior census that we administer every year. Great thing about pre-ACT is that students receive a personalized interest inventory within that test, and they also receive a needs assessment. So that helps our counselors when they're triangulating data and trying to figure out the best mode to help students, wherever they're at. And then again, a deeper analysis, a CCR assessment data to identify potential opportunities for improvement. And again, this goes back to, if we've got an opportunity to offer work keys to more students, not only would they get a job skills assessment, a National Career Readiness Certificate that they could use when they go and apply for a job, but perhaps they do better on that test. And that not only helps them, but it helps us when we're talking about APR. Any questions?
Board member, I'm sorry, Board Member Wolsey?
Thank you for the presentation. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, thank you for what you presented, but I have a kind of backup kind of question. I've been reading a book recently about Finland, and how they approach college and career readiness, and transition, positive, successful transition into the upper sec, you know, higher education. And they spend approximately, if I understand it correctly, they start at age seven, two hours a week, age-appropriate guidance with regards to students, and kind of where they want to move and spend, you know, what are they interested in, what are they good at? Can you talk a little bit, I don't know maybe if you're the right, I don't know if there's another person over here, to talk about, like, what we're doing in regards to guidance and counseling with our sec, well, I'd even start with our middle school and our secondary students, so that they do have successful transitions onto college and careers?
So we do have a product called Naviance that was implemented maybe three years ago, was piloted at a couple of schools. We're actually using that at all of our middle and high schools now. And the great thing about Naviance is that it allows counselors, advisors, building leaders to personalize that plan for students. It's got an interest inventory built into it. I come from the community college world, and we used to talk about it all the time, best fit. You know, if you want to be a CNA, but you don't like working with people, then it's probably not a good fit for you. So we think that tools like Naviance will allow for that more personalized view for kids.
And let me chime in, because I think the board supported us with making, building a budget that allowed for us to put some programs that would add rigor at the primary level, something that we haven't had in place. Being able to have Project Lead the Way launched now at the elementary level is going to introduce a different level of rigor. Having the ability now to properly staff our schools, so we can give our kids, and when we say properly, to the best of what our funding will allow for us to do, which is a lot better than it was two years ago, in terms of the supports now that we have at the school level, with interventionists and specialists and individuals of that nature. But then the other component of what you all have done to further help support us is we actually now have a full-blown curriculum department. Two years ago, we didn't even have a science coordinator in this district. And now we have enough science coordinators that we can service elementary and secondary schools and service them properly. And so what we're doing now is we are, we're building this pipeline that has to start at the elementary level and move up to where we are now, building kids that will be able to receive the counseling-related services and the mentoring and the supports, so that when they get into middle school, they can now take pre-AP, something we weren't offering in some of our middle schools, right? And we still, that's an area we're still working on to build pre-AP, to the point then when they get into the ninth grade, now when kids begin to take AP Human Geography, it's not the first time that they've been exposed to that type of rigor and support. And that's what Avid's going to do. It's gonna give us kids who will have a first-time opportunity to be, to have exposure to these type, this type of rigor, to have it in a very strategic, supportive manner. And so we're putting bits and pieces in at all three levels that we think will better serve us in meeting, getting more than 10 kids that are scoring a three, four, or five on an AP exam.
I'm really thrilled to hear that. Naviance was the other piece that you had mentioned.
Yep.
That in cleaning out some summer stuff from last year's school year, I found the login sheet that apparently was supposed to come to parents. So I actually logged in, and I was quite pleasantly surprised to see how robust it is.
Oh, it's a very powerful tool.
What I want to make sure, though, is that, because I'm sure I wasn't the only parent that discovered that over the summer, just making sure that we are trying to make those connections with parents, knowing that those tools are there, because they help us drive those conversations at home. So they're getting it at school and at home at the same time.
Absolutely.
Board member Oats?
Thank you for the presentation. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So we had here on the ACT that we're gonna continue to provide the pre-ACT, nine through 11. Now, I remember a few years back, the Missouri State Legislature defunded the ACT For All Juniors program. And I know there was discussion about what KCPS might do in the interim. Do we, do we fund that at all?
Yes, sir, we do. That was a part of the budget that you all approved. We built it into our budget, so we don't depend on the state for this.
So we're still funding the ACT For All Juniors? Okay, great. And then I guess another part, as far as college career readiness goes, is the graduation rate, and our four-year graduation rate. And I believe that's actually an APR score as well. Just from research, and I guess from the Data and Accountability Department, what ways are we looking at as far as being, taking a proactive lens and looking at graduation rates? So what I'm interested in is like, every ninth grader walks in, 100% of them are on track to graduate in high school, you know, graduate high school in four years. And so how are we looking at, you know, course attainment throughout college, throughout high school? So that way, I guess, what I'm afraid of is that we come to senior year, and then we realize, hey, we have X percent who are on track, X percent who needs to do above and beyond. And at that point, it might be a burden where then we're losing, you know, kids just out of dropout or anything. So I guess it's a dropout prevention, track, graduate, be proactive type of question, so.
Yep, well, it's a couple of things there. I mean, there are some national metrics. You mentioned percent of ninth graders on track to graduate, percent of eighth graders who pass Algebra I. I mean, these are all things that we're gonna start to build out in our file layout, so that we can track. The other big piece is that we've got a dropout prevention team, who now is reporting directly under Mike. And so what we're gonna do is kind of help that group to be more proactive as far as keeping track of where kids are going. Because, you know, the graduation rate, it is based off of a lot of different things. You've got transfer-ins, transfer-out, dropouts. You know, we've got dropouts that may be included in our rate that aren't really dropouts. And so we just have to get to them sooner and identify where they're at and where they've gone. And I think that by having weekly, bi-monthly meetings, and kind of doing touchpoints and figuring out where we're at with our record-keeping, it'll help to improve the graduation rate.
Let me, let me help, because this is a big deal for me. One of the things that you all approved was to allow for us to hire registrars at the high schools and the middle schools. We did not have registrars, which is kind of something that should never happen. It's very difficult to track record requests, to track kids who are in and out and withdrawing, especially when you have mobility rates at the rate that we have. That is going to pretty much be close to a fail-proof position that now will be able to help us track cohorts. Because here's where we've been getting hit. Kids automatically roll up from the eighth grade. And when they roll up from the eighth grade, whether they show up or not, they fall under that cohort. And so over a four-year period, if we don't clean up that data, if we don't have registrars who are in there working, making the phone calls, trying to verify where these kids are, or then verifying course requests, I mean, records requests, then these kids will stay in our system. And the way that DESI works is if you don't clean it up within a two-year period, and I may be wrong on that, it locks. And so if you don't immediately look at your ninth-grade cohort, and what you're saying, Mr. Oats, is absolutely right. Don't wait until the senior year to start looking at cohorts.
Yep.
You gotta look at it as soon as kids roll in. Then that gives you your denominator that you need. This is where I'm starting from. And then as the mobility piece hits throughout, if you have a great dropout prevention system in place, which is what we will have with our dropout prevention team that we have now, that has been now reassigned and moved over to Research and Accountability, we're gonna have a system to capture all of that moving forward.
Right, yeah, I'm really happy to hear that, just because I do understand that sometimes the graduation rate does reflect a lot of noise. Like, it's stuff that, it's not kids not walking across the stage necessarily. They just didn't walk across here, they might have walked somewhere else. And so I really do want us to clear that, so then we're able to look at what interventions are needed in that if we're seeing a point, whether it's 10th grade, ninth grade, first semester, wherever, where we need to intervene and make sure we're keeping 100% of kids on track to graduate, that we're actually like working towards that, so appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Member Lewis?
Hi. Thank you for the presentation, and nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I figured I had to say that, because everybody else said it. No, but nice to meet you. Just some thoughts. And one first question is that, well, KCPS is offering Project Lead the Way for K-5. Is that 100% of our K-5 students are receiving Project Lead the Way?
100%.
That's a great answer. I'm excited to hear that. And the other piece is, just Dr. Bedell, I was happy to hear you say, you know, and kind of address the 10% that's passing AP. I don't want us to get in a position where we see the bullet point is just in decreasing the number of students taking AP, and we're not doing what we need to do to make sure kids are even ready to do that, because we can do more harm than good. To me, it'd be equivalent to offering Olympic diving. And our kids still don't know how to swim, but we're excited about how many kids are enrolling in Olympic diving. So I'm so excited to hear that we're starting in earlier grade levels and that we are putting in those foundations for those programs. My last thought is, and I'm looking at Slide 3 where it says KCPS is highlighting our advanced scholars. I want to also make sure that as a district, we're always, always, always just celebrating effort on all students and not just our advanced students, because it's oftentimes, and make sure that all of our students are being exposed to rigor and grit and building those muscles, and not just through AP exams and AP courses. Because it's just critical that we celebrate those. We have to link all of this, when it's all said and done, into figuring out how to motivate students to link it to their effort, and not just what we're doing on our end. So just inspiring kids to...
Well, I totally agree. And I mean, we celebrate progress and growth here, because that's what we do. I mean, we know where we're at. We have to, you can't just worry about the high achievers. I mean, you have to work with everybody where they're at. You have to build up the kids who are making that progress, even if it's incremental, and that growth, so.
And I agree. I just, I was just going by the second bullet point, that we only specifically, I know the hearts that are at the table. Thank goodness for this district now, so that I know that we are looking at all students and celebrating all students. I think we just need to match the words when we're making our presentations to go with it.
And you're absolutely right, because once, we went over this two times at least. And we're not gonna always catch everything, and that's a great observation. I actually caught it sitting up here when I was thinking about, when we do our terrific scholars and we do awards, we give all types of students awards, you know. In a way, it could be athletic, it can be teacher-recommended, because the kid is actually performing and working hard. And so wondering, you know, is this something, like, we don't want it to be isolated. Should it be done during our terrific, you know, when we're doing our superstar scholars and all of that, those kind of things? So to your point, absolutely right.
Board Member Manser?
I think this is helpful, and thank you. And gosh, I might as well say, it's nice to meet you too.
Nice to meet you too.
We're all happy to meet you. And you may have said this, I was so focused on trying to read my charts that I may have not heard you when you said this. When we know that we have a lot of room to grow and develop in terms of ACT, securing an adequate score, and oftentimes, one of the things I've appreciated is that our students are taking that ACT test multiple times. But if, in some schools, that may be happening with greater frequency than in other schools. And so what you oftentimes will, in my own parent experience, is students will not get a good score still by their senior year. And they are confronted then with the challenge of trying to take it two, three, or more times in that last year, which, you know, some cramming in practice can sometimes yield a few points, but not necessarily. And that discovery of that lower score often comes right at the moment, applications and scholarship requests are due. So I think my question would be, given that we are now, we are still attempting to do all the ACT work all throughout high school, so not waiting to the senior year, what mechanism is in place to identify those students that are at high risk for not meeting basic state expect, for state school on an ACT score? And what kind of trigger or response mechanism kicks in on those students?
So this is actually a good segue into where the pre-ACT is so important. This will be the third year that we've actually administered that. You know, the great thing about the pre-ACT is that, again, it's got the student interest inventory built in it. But more importantly, it mimics the actual ACT test that they're gonna take. And a lot of the items are gonna be very similar to the things that they're gonna see on the ACT. So, you know, there's a lot of kids that have the ability to pay for tutors and whatnot. So we're actually, that's kind of what pre-ACT is for our kids, is exposing them at an earlier age. They're doing it in ninth grade. When the data comes back, and it comes back very quickly, counselors can then look at different domains and look and see where kids are low and where they're high, and kind of get a gauge immediately where that kid might score on an ACT if he were to take it a week later. So it's a very powerful tool in that regard. And this just gets back to, you know, making sure that our counselors are equipped with the information and making sure that we know how to use it and apply it for students, so that they can increase those ACT scores.
May I ask a follow-up question on that? So it sounds like then the reports will come back to the counselor's office. It's the counselor's responsibility to identify those students who may really fall within a kind of, maybe a risk spectrum for that. And have we realigned counselors' roles and responsibilities such that they have additional time within their current roles and obligations? That they will be able to have that? Or is that now part of the expected role that they have?
We've increased the FTEs, so that counselors could have, the ones who are assigned to the varying schools could actually have more time to perform the duties that are needed. We realized that some schools need more, and you guys basically agreed and voted for us to do the differentiated funding for our schools. And in that differentiated funding, there were some schools that received more of an FTE for counselors. And we did that so that those counselors would have more time to do the duties or perform those duties that are necessary outside of...
And in addition to that, I can assure you, Dr. Wilson is working closely with the counselors. During the week when teachers had PD, our counselors had PD. And part of what, what he, they had PD today too. But part of what he's doing is, our expectation is that we are working with kids, we are looking at those career plans, and that we are providing the support, because those pre-ACT, last year was our first year doing it for ninth, 10th, ninth and 10th and 11th graders. We've done it in the past for 10th graders across the system for pre-ACT, but only Lincoln was allowing for ninth graders to take it. Those reports come home. We have an opportunity as parents, that information is uploaded into Tyler. The kid that I mentored, I was able to look at his data, I was able to talk to teachers. And it gives us an opportunity to know where these kids are, and then to talk to school personnel, and to make sure that they're getting the support that they need. And then for the parents who are able to interpret those reports, you know, then we're able to be in a more proactive way supportive of helping our kids. Where we have to be able to help our kids in our traditional schools is really gonna be through Avid. Avid is going to be able to help a large share of our kids. And in those schools where we've gotten additional support for counseling-related services... And in those schools where we've gotten additional support for counseling-related services, where we may not have kids that are in Avid. We want to make sure that those counselors are also working directly with those students. The beautiful thing is, we have three, um, assistant superintendents who are in here hearing all of this. Understand the importance of what we need to do and how we need to be working with our schools. And the work we need to do in collaboration with Dr. Wilson, with our counselors, to make sure that we're not just, it's not just taking pre-AC for the sake of taking it, and then we're not doing anything with the data. We actually use that data this year to help make some of the decisions we've made from a budgeting standpoint.
Board Member Evans?
Mr. Williams, you're getting, you've only been, you've been with us for three years and you're getting more attention than some people who've been here for only a year. So...
That's a good thing.
I don't want to say welcome aboard, but it's nice meeting you. Uh, my, I have twin granddaughters that went to Lincoln. And, uh, they took the, the, the pre-ACT and they didn't do very well. How do you track the, uh, the progress or success of our current, uh, people that teach that in schools? Now, they were able to get outside help from a friend of mine. And this lady was able to give them like three to four points higher than what they received when they were at Lincoln. So they were able to get into Spelman and they are like juniors, uh, this year. So I've heard a lot about, uh, the prep in the high schools. But it seems to me that, uh, there's no check on how they're actually doing. So, what, what, what am I saying?
Well, I, again, I think that's where the pre-ACT i- is important. Because you're getting, you're getting live data, you know, pretty close to immediately. And again, it's by domain or content area, whatever, however you want to call that. But, you know, somebody who's sitting down with the kid, whether it's a teacher, a counselor, a parent. They're going to be able to look at this report and see exactly where the kid's deficiencies may be. And that's a lot different than showing up and taking an ACT and getting a score. And maybe it's not where you thought it should be and then being discouraged and not ever taking it again. You know, the pre-ACT is more, um, it, it's like a, it's a, it's a solution to a problem. Um, and again, we, once we get the data back, we just, we look at it, we use that data to figure out where the kids are at and what types of supports we can implement to make sure that they are getting, you know, the, the help and support that they need.
And I know on, um, and say this because I, I can't sit here and say to this board in the community that it's a, a similar program at every single one of our high schools. But we do contract with outside providers to provide ACT support. One of them being the Urban League. Um, we have individual tutors who come in and work on our campuses from, with, with some of our students. We've had program at Central. We've had some support over at Southeast. We know we have teachers who actually provide SAT prep over at Lincoln. And so, but we don't have a systematic approach to say that every single school, and this is something that Ms. Lewis constantly asks about, and I know some of the other board members too. You know, is it consistent across the board? And that's, that's the piece that we are still working on. I mean, this, last year was our first year doing this. And it's, and we know we still have some work in that area and we will continue to do that. Um, but I do want you to know that we do offer, uh, prep, ACT prep classes. And we open that up to students who want to attend. And the problem is, sometimes it's on, it's on Saturdays. And it's very difficult to get folks out on a Saturday to take advantage of, of some of these opportunities that we will fund, that we will pay for.
Um, I have a couple of questions, um, around, um, the scorecard. I know that the scorecard is something that we, um, have said that we were prioritizing in terms of our reports to the board. Um, and how does this information interact or integrate the scorecard measures? And I was looking at the goal five, which I know that this is centered around the first goal. Um, but the one around the, uh, 5B of how many students, um, have completed courses, activities, and experiences based on a college and career plan? Um, so can you kind of go over how your presentation integrates our, our scorecard?
So, a lot of the information from the CTR, um, within APR is going to feed into that scorecard. You know, we're talking the grad rate, um, you know, percentage of kids who are scoring at above the, the state average on the ACT and, and whatnot. So it, it all feeds in to the scorecard. Um, as far as, your second question was about the student success plan?
There's, um, for example, the one that I'm looking at for 2017, 2018. It talks about it being a baseline year. So have we co, have we collected any information on that 5B? Um, and this might be more of a question for you, Dr. Vadel. But, um, the school year, that school year has completed. So, have, have we updated that information for the baseline year for 5B? Where it says the percentage of students who completed courses, activities, experience based on a college and career plan? So the scorecard right now says that the year that we just got done with, 2017, 2018, was, was going to be a baseline. So how, do we have that information where we're able to update this?
Not, not right now.
Oh, is that going to be the September 24th? Districts will have the complete and final data set of all, okay.
That's something we're continuing to gather. And Jermaine Wilson has piloted that college and career plan, um, this past year. So he'll be able to help us gather that data.
Okay, great. So in September, we'll see this updated on, on, on here. Okay, great. Wonderful. The other thing you talked about was IRCs. And so, how many do we have currently that we're offering? And can you kind of go over the list? I think that it's a really great, um, selling point. Like if we have these, uh, completers, and I love Dr. Vadel's, um, sentiment around if all of our kids graduated with a diploma in one hand and a completer in the other. So can you, uh, kind of discuss what we are currently offering in that vein?
I, I wish I could. I'm, I wasn't prepared to go over the specific IRCs. I don't... I...
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And, you know, the IRC is a more rigorous, um, test than the, um, TSA. And, and we are moving towards IRCs because it has more value for completers, for sure. I mean, you get an industry-recognized credential. So if you go out and maybe college isn't for you, but you've got a net plus degree. I mean, it's a lot easier for you to get in and get a job. And if we prepare our kids to actually be good stewards and successful in the job market. You know, we know that a lot of times, companies will pay for them to go back to school to, to get an AA or a BA. As long as they've got that credential to get them in the door.
Yeah, and I think, again, that's a great selling point, uh, to communicate to the public that these are the things that, that we're offering. And this is the vision that we have, is that your, um, the children will be, or students will be ready to compete, um, in many areas.
The global market.
Ms. Wolfie, Wolfie?
Um, so I know you talked about that based on the new budget, we have increased guidance, counseling, FTEs in certain schools. But do we know the average counselor-to-student ratio within the district currently? Um, the reason I'm, I, it kind of goes to my next point is that I think part of, I, if I understand my personal experience, it's, it's a lot of students to a counselor. And, um, to make that work better, bringing parents into that equation, using Tyler and the Naviance login, but also communicating with them how to work, um, with their student, with the counselor. I think, um, we'll get a higher lift out of it. Sorry about that.
Yeah, definitely. Um, we can provide that data for the board. But I, I can tell you, just thinking about the number of counselors that are at our high schools. In comparison to the student enrollment, we are far below what DESI recommended, uh, student ratio to counselors are.
Board Member Lewis?
Uh, I just wanted to make a comment, uh, relative to our CTE programs and that, that thought of finishing with that diploma and completer. Uh, I would certainly encourage us, I know we often look at those programs as one for students that may not be interested in going to college. I cannot stress enough how amazing those programs and those experiences would be even for students that are going into college. Uh, I am, and about three lives ago was a chemical engineer. And if I had any type of application kind of experience, uh, going into my engineering classes or even my math classes or physics classes or chemistry classes. Uh, I can imagine an electrical engineer being able to work with an electrician or a trade or, I mean, it just, I want to encourage us not to look at those programs and those experiences just for, um, students that may not be interested in going to college.
Ms. Lewis, I totally agree with you and here, here's the goal. I, I said, I have a vision of eventually wanting our system to become a system where every single kid walks out of here with some type of completer, regardless of where you decide you want to go. Um, I have a meeting tomorrow morning with Dr. Beatty from, uh, MCC, uh, over the chancellor over to Penn Valley campuses. Because in conversation around, um, what can we do in partnership to really redesign Manual and make it almost this metro tech center that serves, you know, children during the day. Nine thirty, open up from seven twenty, and then we're open until 10 o'clock at night. Where we're potentially serving adults. But I, I am very serious about that. I think there's a lot of, uh, opportunities for us to collaborate with some of the different leaders in the city to, to make a reality. I too agree with you. I think every kid, um, should deserve that. And I think one of the things that we just did recently, we were able to hire a director over at, um, Manual Tech. That came from Wyandotte High School in KCK. KCK, Wyandotte High School is kind of the flagship high school in the state of Kansas for kids graduating with, having that, that, that completer in addition to their high school diploma. So we were able to get that person to come here, get this work started at Manual Tech.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Did we mention it was nice to meet you?
Okay, are we ready for item 2.02? The chair recognizes Dr. Vadel to pre, to introduce the business items for our August 22nd board meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The following items are items that the board will have to take, we're asked, requesting the board to take action on. An update to administrative policies, policy compliance, and policy BVFA. Uh, cornerstone of a CARE contract for 1.125 million. Sherwood Center for a million, 36,432 dollars. Our breakfast, accepting the breakfast in the classroom grant for $500,000. Uh, we're bringing back another batch of, uh, Lincoln Middle School construction bids. Uh, the first student lease addendum. And then the Lincoln Preparatory School HVAC contract.
All right, thank you. This brings us to the conclusion of our agenda this evening. If there's no objection, we, the meeting is adjourned, adjourned. Thank you.